Yes, Mr. Chairman. Eradu Villarreal, Jorge Lomínez, Rafael Duñez Senior, Abraham Lugo, Johnny Narváiz, Raúl Ugaldes, David Valdina, Daniela Salapas, Ana Gabriela Villarreal. On the record, we have four.
All right, I know that Commissioner Lugo, uh, he is working with the attendants, so he has to be excused, but I do believe that the commissioners are going to make it.
Uh, thank you.
I'll do to excuse the commissioner of the group. A motion in second.
Thank you.
Second, I'll go to the favor.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Next time we have is, uh, American Santa's place of allegiance. I guess you know more, because you know flag.
More.
All right, I play the flag of the United States of America and the Republic of San Francisco.
What is it?
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I don't even know that all, I don't believe anybody signed up to this conference, will you?
No, sir.
All right. So next time is workshop on Rico's project, Unified Development Code. All right?
Yes, sir, um, just to let you all know, it's been, uh, it's been a productive day. We had this presentation plus other information today with some staff members just to go over some more details and, and I know that, uh, the group has some more information that they're going to be updating after that. Uh, earlier today here in this room, we had a presentation for the Laredo Builders Association. We had about thirty-five attendees, a lot of whom were engineers and developers interested in this project. And, and I think it was a very good turnout. There was good question and answer time and some opinions and I think, I thought it went very well. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Mario Benya to the commission. So he can introduce his team and, um, Mario, you can go ahead and get started.
Thank you, Mr. Mario Benya for the record. Um, so a partner here at Abel City, we were hired, I think about two years ago now, uh, with, with the COVID lip in the way, which is why we are where we are at this point, but I think we've been moving the project along even through the pandemic, um, and we're happy to be at a point where we can present you all with, uh, with a draft to review. Emphasis on the word draft. Here with me is Aaron Handy, our principal and, uh, in charge of our McCalleen office and our planning department. And Leslie Abu Rad, uh, one of our planners in our team, so happy to have them. We're, um, we're going to take you through a brief overview of what we've done up to this point. Just give you a status update, um, let you know about the process, the next steps, um, how we're going to make sure that everyone who needs to understand the, the changes in the, in the code, I shouldn't call it changes, everyone who needs to understand the new code, um, understands it, um, process or comments, or integrating comments. And then, you know, we can even take comments on that at this point, whereas we plan out the, the final steps before adoption. If you have comments on even on our process, if you have suggestions on how we can efficiently get that done, if you need more time to review, another, you know, any other sort of, uh, uh, way forward so that we all feel comfortable when this comes to you for adoption, um, that's our goal. So right now we have draft number one on the, on the, on the planning and zoning website. It's available to download. I think, uh, you can probably send the commission a link if you like, but, but it's on the website. I'm not sure if we want to provide paper copies for anyone from the planning department for the commission, but I think that's, um, that's probably doable, give you all for a paper copy.
I think they've already been updated.
Great, okay. So it's on the website for the next few weeks. The idea is for everyone to, everyone who's interested, um, this goes for the commission, the, the developer and builder, sort of world in Laredo, uh, now have their instructions on how to get their hands on it. They've got a schedule to return comments to us. And the idea is, uh, at the, in the last few weeks of August, we'll sit down with, with, uh, developers, uh, really with the aid of the LBA to reach everyone we can reach. Sit down, have a workshop with them and go through the nuts and bolts after they reviewed it. Today, uh, we want to sort of reintroduce, uh, remind, uh, some of you all are new commissioners, so maybe you, you, you're not completely familiar with the origins of the, this initiative to re, to overhaul our land development code. So we want to go through just a little bit of, you know, how, you know, the basis of the purpose of, of, of re-code, which really stems from our comp plan, uh, which was updated and adopted in 2017. So it's a qualification of the, of that document. Again, we'll discuss the process as I said, and then we picked out some sections of the, of the plan that we thought might be just illustrative in letting you know just sort of how the plan reads, sort of, you know, broad strokes, but, you know, zeroing in where we need to, so you can just sort of get an idea of what to expect as you dive in to the, uh, to the plan. I'm sorry, to the code.
So the comp plan is called Viala Lelo.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we've got a little comp plan. What was that? So again, so part backing up here just a little bit, um, the, one of the major changes here, um, has a lot to do with organizing the, the, the code. And so structure and organization, we, you know, we'll get, we'll get into, you know, how, the, the thought process of how that got reorganized and what that looks like so that you can dive in and sort of have a better idea of what to expect and how to navigate. All right, so again, implementing plan, you know, we'll get into just what, you know, what, what that comp plan looked like, whether it was, was very compelling, um, public outpour for a, for a change in, in the development options that are available and the way we build our cities responding to that is, is probably the primary, uh, priority in, in, uh, in the, in the UDC. We're calling it, now we're calling it Unified Development Code rather than Land Development Code because it includes zoning regulation here as well. Incorporating best practices from around the country, um, positioning the city for changing market demands. The next generation of home buyers and customers might be looking for different products, we're going to give, um, developers buyer right, the option to design different types of development that isn't necessarily, that is now discretionary or there's barriers to it. And then creating user friendly and simplified UDC, right? So is it legible? Can some, can somebody with a non-practitioner sort of navigate themselves through this process? That's, that's the goal, that it's, um, legible and, and usable by, by your way. So again, just to remind us, the five big ideas of Plan Divalarelo, uh, creating attractive walkable destinations, making downtown and the energy great, completing our streets for all modes of transportation, uh, creating new and improved public spaces and ultimately creating a crossroads but affordable rate. Here are just some examples of some graphics out of the, that are in the comp plan. Just creating the concepts. Aaron, is this word handed off to you?
Thanks Mario, Aaron Handy, the case study. So we wanted to walk through, Mario already did a pretty good job of presenting how we got here, but we wanted to walk through the exact steps we took as far as public engagement and process to get here. So it, it started with, um, some interviews and stakeholder meetings. We did some focus groups with different, the development community and other focus groups. We had some planning nights, some of you might have, uh, been in some of the planning nights that happened a little over a year ago. And then we had a presentation that was done by one of our sub, or three on land values, which we're having to work on some additional case studies of what the new code is going to do for land values, which will be important things that we'll share as soon as those are ready. So the part at the top is key as well. We've been meeting with staff the whole time. We had a workshop last July. We just did two, two to three months of, um, city staff reviews of our first draft in order to get to this point. And so now we're coming back for a second round of public engagement in order to.
When you talk about city staff, what city staff are you talking about?
So all the major departments, planning, traffic, arts, utilities, building, under fire, we're all present. At least some representative, mostly with the heads, but we have some staff doing inspections and some people that deal with the day-to-day activities. I'm sure, uh, or the organization can give you, you know, a list of the attendees I have notes as well.
Since I wasn't here, I'm just asking questions for all of us.
Yeah, that, yeah, it was pretty, uh, pretty well attended and everything else, we're going to update them. And this is just going back to the community engagement that this was built on, which was the community engagement that we did for Laredo. So all of the vision and goals that we're trying to align the UDC with the comp plan are built on community engagement and as vested interests. So we had twelve hundred participants, over eight hundred surveys that were filled out at the beginning, thirty-five thousand participants. And then from the different comments we received from the community through legal Laredo as well as, uh, our public engagement for this effort, the overwhelming comment came in from the process. So a big part of this is really doing all the different procedures and making sure that the code is easy to use and the processes have flow charts and are streamlined so that anyone who doesn't know what they need to do, where the application goes, who's the approving body, etc. So then beyond what we heard from the community, our team also did an assessment report of the existing LDC and came up with some, some issues that we've had. So related to usability, we found that the existing LDC is poorly organized, the sample of contents is confusing. There's no roadmap for the, the person who's never seen the document before to pick it up and really know where to find information and then they have to jump back and forth between different sections to find what they need. And then there was no flow chart of procedures or, or, um, you know, clearly identified approval authorities, etc. So just bringing it up and maybe it were useful. As far as administration, um, you know, there was no abbreviated procedures or administrative approvals. Not every application is equal and so we think that there are some areas where you could streamline, uh, applications to allow for administrative approvals. And sometimes there were materials, um, that didn't belong in LDC chapter twenty-four, they belong in other, other courses that they know, and so we, we, uh, kind of moved those and cross-rap where, where necessary. And then related to development, uh, code lack, you know, their performance standards provide developers with very few choices or opportunities for trade-offs or alternative compliance. And it treated all subdivisions really same in kind of tight location. And then, so how does all that sort of flow into the organizational part of the new code? We want to make sure we avoid all those pitfalls from the last code and want to make sure we get, you know, a usable code that's clear. And so we decided to take a setback and look at sort of zoning regulations, what different types they are, what fits this community. So you have currently a little bit of each of these, maybe minus form-based code, but you put in zoning the one that everyone's familiar with, that's where you divide the city into clear districts and it's single uses in each district. So that's the way the current LDC is set up for the residential business and industrial. A form-based code cares more about the building shape and how it addresses the street and less about the use. Discretionary zoning is where standards are negotiated between the applicant and the city. And you do have a PD overlay where that currently exists. And then performance standards are things like FARs, impervious cover percentages. But we think that all of those different types of zoning regulations have a place in this code and so we recommend using a hybrid code, um, to really make sure that you get dependable quality development. So moving forward, our recommendations for, or strategies for the new code are to use a hybrid. From the Viva Laredo, we've talked about converting the business districts to functionally mixed use, updating the outdated permitted use table and streamlining processes, and then allowing for middle housing and accessory dwelling units. Go ahead, sir.
When you talk about business district, what were exactly you were making reference to?
So that's the B1, B3, B4. Uh, and we'll get to, there's a, there's a slide that shows the old districts and the new districts and how they align. See that. So as far as updating the permitted use table and streamlining the processes, these are just some examples of some of the graphics. So the one on the left is the updated permitted use table. We've removed a lot of the outdated information, consolidated it into one easy to read chart, um, so that it's in one place and you go for, for all the districts and you find what's allowed. The middle graphic is, there's a new article dedicated strictly to procedures and all of the different procedures have been, uh, based on this simple flow chart, uh, as far as, you know, when, when the application comes in, who's the reviewing body, um, what the appeal process is, etc. And then the top right is a table which identifies each of the approving agencies for each of those applications. And then in addition to this, these are just a few examples, anywhere possible in the code, we tried to consolidate as much information into tables, graphics and matrices so that it's easy for someone to find all the information they need in one spot. And then back to the middle housing, you'll see in most communities you have either single-family detached and then apartment housing, but the, the middle in between that is often neglected. And so we wanted to not only allow, but improve regulations related to middle housing, which is attached dwellings, duplexes, townhouses, zero lot line, cottages and accessory dwelling units. So we wanted to amend the existing regulations. You'll notice in your existing code in some of the residential districts, townhouses and zero lot lines are currently permitted, but there's no way to get around the setbacks for those zones. So you have to do a PD or a special use code or something to get around it. So we wanted to create a, a special use regulation that allows townhouses and zero lot lines to happen by right without that secondary approval process. And then creating new relevant regulations for accessory dwelling units and mixed use. So then how do we achieve that clarity and ease of use? These are some of the strategies we think should be implemented. We want to use consistent terminology. We want to consolidate the district purpose statements, dimensionals standards and related graphics to the districts in one location for each zoning district. Clarify the writing style. Move all the regulations for specific uses to their own article and then create a, a solid, uh, definitions library or rules for interpretation, um, that makes sort of any question that might come up, you know, easy to answer. We also wanted to arrange the new code logically by topic. You'll see when I get to the, the outline of the existing format to the new format, what I mean by that, that there was sort of no rhyme or reason to the way the LDC was organized as far as what came first and second. And then as much as possible, once again, just consolidate repetitive lists or, um, excessive legal ease and make it simpler and, um, you know, less, less verbiage and more graphics. So here's some examples of those. The one on the left is a sample of a typical cut sheet that'll be presented for each of the zoning districts. It has all of the dimensional standards and information you would need about a zoning district. So anyone could come and pull this sheet out and do a quick feasibility study or understand what's possible on their property. And then the table on the right is a, um, a chart which shows all of the required application materials for each different application, whether it's a rezoning, uh, site plan and master plan, etc. So those are all consolidated to one place so that anyone who's turning in an application knows what they need to submit. So as I mentioned, here is the existing code format on the left. And you'll notice that it sort of just jumps right into boards and commissions and agencies. The, the subdivision regulations in Article Three isn't really the complete subdivision regulations. There's a separate subdivision ordinance which is now being combined, uh, with that in the new Article Four. And so we tried to start with the, the articles that are going to be used the most. So we start out with the zoning district, zoning standards and subdivision standards. And then stuff like agencies, definitions, legal provisions, that can all move to the, the backend of the document. So beyond that, uh, sort of organizational framework, we wanted to just pull out a few samples of things that might interest the community, things that, um, are, are changing in the new code. This isn't a complete list. As Mario mentioned, you know, we've got the, the draft up on the website. The intent is that you can visit the website, download it, take your time with all of the details, uh, and provide, uh, you know, comments on any of the articles, but we just wanted to introduce you to it so you knew your way around, um, and just pull out a few of these components. So the zoning districts will be aligned with the future land use map coming out of Viva Laredo. So on the left is the existing zoning districts and on the right is the new zoning districts. And in the middle there is sort of how the, the old districts align with the new districts. Once again, this is still a draft, we're still working through this, but, uh, one of the key changes you'll notice is that there's now three mixed use districts. There's a neighborhood mixed use, mixed use center and regional mixed use.
Let me ask you real quick, you've got R1, sorry, is it? R2 residential low and you have R1 residential low. What's the difference between those?
That's RS.
RL1 and RL2?
Yeah, R2 is in residential high.
RL2? Because it says low.
Oh, yeah, RL2 is R1, correct. So R1 is the old district, RL2 is the new district. So there's two, uh, low density residential districts still.
Okay, what's the difference between each one of the zones that you're proposing? What's the difference between RL1 and RL2 if they're both, you know, residential low?
Yeah, they would be slightly different density and dimensional standards. I do have one of them called out, so this is the RL2 compared to the old district, but, uh, I don't know the exact difference that is between the two.
What was RS? It's because the old, the old.
Where's RS? There was also RS.
Can you go back some back? There you go.
So RS is now a new RL1.
This is residential.
RS is up on top. It's right up for AG, okay? So what is RS? RS was zoned at, uh, bigger, bigger density lots.
Multi-family district.
That's what that was. Yeah, I, I'm still trying to grasp what, you know, residential low, you got residential R1, R2, then you got residential high, R1, R2. Seems to me like if you want to simplify things, you would just keep it in one and give it different standards. Why go through R1, R2, or, R1H, RH2 residential high? I mean, unless you can explain to me what, what's the differences that are significant.
Right, so it's, right?
Yeah, right.
First, let me tell you the second comment in your question. You said, you said make it one would make the standards different?
Well, I mean, if you can answer to the question as to what's the difference between RL1 and RL2?
Right.
Because if you look at the title, it's the same title.
Right.
And if you look at the RH1 residential high and RH2 residential high, I'm saying, well, what is a significant difference that requires differentiation?
Different code.
Differentiation.
Right. So, and this, this is sort of a blanket statement for this, for the entire, for the entire, the entire regulation of the new zoning districts and its density and intensity sort of dictate how far, you know, how, how far up and down you are in this, in these categories. So RL1, all right, has three point six dwelling units per acre. So that's a, that's a, that's sort of a very low density dispersed development.
Yes.
You usually, you would put that like sort of on the outskirts of a, of a, of a large neighborhood or development. RL2 is less, is, is much denser. It's ten dwelling units per acre and the, and the base lot size is five thousand square feet. So RL2 is what you and I would probably recognize today as.
Core.
Uh, right, was that true? So the other one is for, the other one is for larger lot homes. And there are other things that are different like, you know.
So what's the minimum per footage for that RL1?
The base per footage is fourteen thousand.
Because you're talking about huge lots.
Right.
Now let me ask you this, based on this market, the way the cost of land is, what was your thinking on that? How, I mean, I'm trying to understand the rationale behind the different codes here. I, I get it, you know, big development, you know, density factor wise per acre is nice.
Right.
I guess my question on that would be, okay, given the cost of land as you know it now.
Right.
In the comp plan, what do we have in Divalarelo?
Sure.
That signifies that we're supposed to have this type of quote, because I don't disagree with it. I'm just trying to get it in my mind to figure out how it works.
Good. So we're supposed to be, so the, the, the comp plan of places that are, that have a variety of densities and densities and uses. And so in that spectrum of really dense, like downtown kind of, you know, apartments on top of storefronts and that's, that's the most intense, um, sort of base district. And then on the other side of the spectrum is very low density and that, that whole spectrum needs to exist in the city to have options. So it's all about providing options for people to design and build and respond to a market opportunity in a way that works. So yes, land is expensive right now, but, and so it won't be used because that's the way they strike down, but that might change in the future. And there's a, maybe an opportunity for some, somebody to annex some land where it doesn't make sense to create so much density there, so we need to give them away.
I get it, I get it now that you explained it, I get it. You know, I get it, I mean, I don't, I don't disagree with the concept. Obviously, you know, we want to build million dollar homes, you want to have that option. You know, and I get it, okay. So now, just one more question. Now what is the difference between the, uh, the residential, uh, RH1 and RH2? Is it?
Is the density the same sort of, it's the, it's the lot size, how many apart, how many multi-family, uh, dwellings?
Wellings per acre? Okay, now, isn't there, uh, under the building code, it gives you a maximum density per acre? So how does that fit into that?
Each one of these districts has a maximum density per acre.
And it's in line with the standard building code?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we can't.
Okay, all right. Just a question.
You know, many years ago, we talked about, uh, AG and using AG inside the city limits. So when a property would come in and ask for annexation, immediately the property would be given an R1. Because when you give them an AG, you provide a tax shelter for property that is getting all the city services and yet not paying their fair share of taxes. So why would you continue incorporating that zone when you're trying to upgrade and do the changes that you're proposing to do?
Um, well.
And I, and I can give you.
Maybe not all of them are, are tax shelters, maybe some.
Well, they are.
Right, some of them might be.
There's one on Caya del Norte, been there for years. It's been a sore point for everybody. And I guess, uh, his question is, based on the comp plan, how does the AG zone three? I guess that would be the relevant question. Because in a urbanized area, the last thing you want to do is have probably AG zones, because that's going to give you conflicts. I'm going to have goats. We have a conflict right now, my son just bought a house in Alexander. There's those vaquitos behind him and the goats just got out, he's calling me, they're coming to eat my grass, my trees. Shoot them!
Shoot them!
Goat's got to eat. Well, this touches on a whole other, like, parallel policy that's been written against the urban agriculture policy that, you know, which I think we made some good strikes on. And so there is legitimate use for AG.
Okay.
Inside the city limits that we can't restrict out, we shouldn't, I guess.
So, but I guess the, the thought that we're trying to get at is, okay, what is the thought process on having AG within an urbanized area?
Well, it doesn't necessarily have to be in urban area, but it can be inside the city limits.
Well, but I mean, if you're inside the city limits, you're almost in there. You're not, you're not doing much annexation right now because. because of costs on areas that are not going to be utilized very quick, okay? So unless you're gonna, I don't know of anybody who would say, and I could be wrong, and that's why I'm trying to figure out what you guys are thinking. I mean, obviously, there's a lot of new uses in agriculture, you know? Uh, and that's what I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out, okay, are you all thinking of, you know, maybe there's going to be a farm that produces, I don't know. Something like that, you know? Is that some of your thinking, or what is it thinking up in that AG district?
You have so many acres, thousands, maybe, maybe tens of thousands of acres inside the city limits that are not developed, that are not developed now. And the, and the market isn't ready to absorb them, to become developed.
You're saying there are thousands of acres inside the city limits? I don't agree.
That are inside the city limits.
The only, the only entity that has a thousand acres is the city, and it sits on the Vega land, and that's land that we bought many years ago.
Right.
But you don't have thousands of acres.
Maybe it's not thousands, but it is a substantial amount of acreage that is not, that the market couldn't absorb into development.
Well, I think, I think what is happening is that the city has leapfrogged certain areas. And, and the areas that you're talking about are inside the city limits, but they're not annexed. And the reason for that is that the state laws have changed, and they don't allow you for unilateral annexation. And so all of that has changed, and, and you're going to have issues in incorporating some of these things.
Well, so then, let me, I think this is the, the comment that we sort of start to dissect the AG and figure out if there's some tinkering needs due to it, so that we don't have the unintended consequences.
I know Commissioner Lamiga's comment.
Mario, what actually we were talking about is that creating so many residential subdivisions in the, in the code. We, because once you have the low residential, like you mentioned, 14,000 per foot or more, then you're limiting that area for subdivisions, breaking through some of the sections. I think that if we still keep, that will cover not only small lots, but medium lots. And it would be a further benefit, or the best for to designate the size of the lots that they want to bring.
So I think, so what I think, I was right there. So, that being said, if you're going to have residential, then you want to limit the development.
Quite possibly.
Because on one particular area, we might have, and, we might have a section of land or more to, to create our size of the residential right now.
Yeah.
And then build sites that are small. So why create subdivisions of the code when we can stick, we can stick to the R1?
And have that riding inside.
Well, that would cover a lot.
Right, right.
And then, then, the, the planning zone, and then the department decide what we want to bring to the city. It will create a confusion, at least for, for me and Sadek, for the developer city. That would be a problem for it to bring forward by investors. It's, what are we going to develop here? Is that going to be an RL1 or an RL2? And what more are we going to be able to break it down into just simple R1? Let's say, let me buy 100 acres or 200 acres. And we decide that we want to do the RL1, and then RL2. But then, part of the time we decide, I don't want to do it. Then we come back, the planning zone, and try to do a new zone.
Right.
Something that should be covered by the RL1 as a whole. So we can come down and do RL8, and now we're going to go here and have a different. But I personally think, I looked at it, and I think, and Adam would agree with me, Bob, that we should keep that simple, R1, and code single family residence. That would be a common.
Well noted, uh, we, I think I, I just want to say, um, I'd like to take this back, and then, and then see if we sort of concur on every point of the, of the code. Because I agree, I think we, I think we're in agreement as far as simplifying and collapsing as much as possible. If we want to do that, that's the gesture here, overall gesture. But I think we have to go back and study, just sort of tinker with it, and get some case studies in drawing, because I want to see if the same dimensional and other sort of regulations that we're applying to the large lots, if we apply them to the small lots, is that going to have unintended consequences in the, in the way that things are laid out and designed? Like, is the, because the, the dimensional standards and setbacks for a small lot should be different from the dimensional setbacks and standards for a large lot. And it's looking between each one as well. So, you know, what might, what might have smaller setbacks than the other?
What, I'm just going to bring this real quick, because then we can deal with that.
Well, we can, we're here to, you know, work this out.
I would like a hard copy of, so we, I can go over it at my convenience and bring up the points. I'm going to work, you know, most of it, if we can get a hard copy, it would be ideal for a complete design. Go ahead.
Okay, no, all I want to say is, that's a, that's a great comment, and we should collapse as much as possible. We, we might just come back to you and say, well, we think, we suggest that we keep X, Y, Z for these reasons, and then you can give us a bit of comment.
I think it's something like you said, y'all need to look at it, because when I saw all this different new codes, I go, it seems like we didn't simplify things, it seems like we just added more. Uh, and I know what you're trying to do, but I, it's like Corky and I were discussing earlier. If we can simplify, whereas you've got one code, R1, or whatever that is, and that gets you, you know, single-family residential, but of course you haven't been able to standard for your lot size. And that means if it's, you said 5,000, 5,000 and up. Uh, now, the other code that you need to do, I guess, or look at, is you have all these R1As, R1As, and there's got to be room somewhere for that, on the densities also, but I think.
They're feeding into RS1.
RL1, residential B.
What would lead you to that, that small lot? And obviously, it's been contacted by, by certain areas of the community that have questioned why we're allowed, why is being allowed to have such small lots that they, or they, in certain areas, mainly in suburbs. I feel that right now is a good time to look at that. And create a limitation as to increasing the size of the lot. So where the guys have property, will live within it, will have the services, they name us enough parking, enough, uh, area in the streets, enough movement of their children, and the family itself, enough to have it as a, a central gathering area where they can, or they can even get anybody to visit, because it creates a flow of neighbors, and then it creates a problem. So I think this is a good time to look at those. And maybe we need that type of sign, increase the, the, the size of lots, to maybe fight out.
Well, I think the thing you can do there is, I mean, there's always going to be a need for the smaller unit, but I think the concept that we want to keep in mind, based on what they're looking at, is integrating things. Where you may have, you know, a smaller-sized unit, or a percentage of that subdivision may have so many of those, let's say 3,000 square foot lots, you know, the 4,500 square foot lots, it's a mix.
Yeah, that's what we were talking about, maybe have 5,000 square feet lots, and maybe it shouldn't, uh, uh, do 3,000, 4,000 square feet, see? Because that particular way, we don't have a small, 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 small. So we get a lot that is, that might be 5,000 square feet.
Yeah, 5,000.
And then we have 4,300 that are 3,500 square feet. So that creates a, a motion in that space, see? With all the banking and everything, see, for such a bank, for such a. But that being said, Arad and I have been talking about that, and we feel that this is a time, I mean, to create a, is that, I'm trying to connect.
I know, I know, I was trying to.
The, uh, that's, that's something that we can do now, given though if we're going to provide the R1. We can also, also provide a, a safeguard for whoever's doing the buying. It's a problem, we see it in Michigan, a street, beautiful project. Now, if I was having problems, there could be parking and the road, I'm already. I think it's a good, I'm sorry, I'm making a mistake.
But you can put on your microphones, what we did is we turned off the speaker, but the microphones are so the camera can pick up your voice.
Okay, so you can, let me fix yours and listen.
And I just want to, I just want to record your, your, your comment.
I'll send it.
Like, you're sorry, right? Just so we can have a, is, your comment is, is that, so, because I heard kind of two things. I've heard, um, we should, our minimum lot size in Vega Laredo should be no less than 5,000 square feet on the one side. Or the other option was to, to limit that adjacency of that lot to some, to some other.
It's a percentage, we're sorry, everybody's saying, let's just use the number like. What he was, you know, saying is, okay, if you got 100 lots, a percentage of that 100 should be the greater of maybe 5,000, and then you're going to have to incorporate some smaller lots because of the cost of, of everything, okay? That's kind of like what we were discussing. You know, there is one subdivision, I think, and that's off of the Mindrove, it has that concept, uh, I can't remember the name, the name of it right off, right off, the one we had, Polis, the trucking business right next to it.
Oh, uh.
Indian Sunset.
Indian Sunset.
Indian Sunset has that kind of a concept, where you do have various sized lots, and it works very well.
Right.
Uh, and that's because what he's, you know, his comment was, when we were discussing him, is if we're going to start creating nothing but 3,000 square foot lots, high density per acre, it, it's, you know, there's, there's factors in there, that you want to see how can you still provide a product, but at the same time, give everybody a bit more space.
You see that, the biggest problem that we have is that, now we're cutting the sizes of, of the lots, because the developer needs to make more money, and I agree with that, with that, with that. And I think that it's a, it's a, it's a good idea to do it. But we have to understand that, that we have our own community living there. So how do you solve that problem? Well, two ways, one of them, the way Arad and I were talking about, you create a sort of, of spaces that will guarantee certain benefits for the community. There are one being parking, the other one being traffic. And secondly, we stop the size of the building or the structure that is going to be created on lots that are 3,500 square feet, because we know, you say, well, how, how much can you build on it? Well, we're going on some areas, we're going to zero or six feet from, from the limitations of the, of the property. But they go up, and then you get four bedrooms, or 3,500 square feet. You got four bedrooms, you need, you got four cars. Where are you going to park them?
More.
More.
And then you got the suegra, or the tio, or the visitor, and that's the problem. It's not about the developer making money, I mean, I'm a developer, sorry. So it's how we read our constituents, our community members. And they say, well, that's, that's all I could afford to buy. Well, that's good, I used to have six cars, and, and you're overflowing into everybody else, and that creates a problem. So that's the reason that I bring up that we need to do something about that, see? I mean, you're going to look at it, and, and I'll be more than happy to, to put my input there. That was my comment.
Okay, I, I want to say that, moving forward, the idea of two-car garages and, and having 2,500 square foot homes, and you have four bedrooms, you have six cars, your lot size is 100 in the front, whatever it is, or less, if you go to 5,000. And yet, we're not addressing that, whether you create a space away from the homes and create parking so that, so that you can have activity and mobility in the areas where the homes are? Because, because the way you currently are having that happen, an emergency vehicle comes in, and you've got a 40-foot back-to-back, and you've got cars parked on either side of the street, because they don't fit in the houses, and all of a sudden, the ambulance can't get in, the fire truck can't get in, and you're putting people's lives at risk, because they can't afford anything else, or they, or maybe they can afford a bunch of cars, but they can't park them in their house, so they've got to park them everywhere else. And, I mean, I have that, I have that problem in, at my block, that these older people that live in the block have a lot of visitors, and they have a lot of children. And they all decide to have lunch and supper together all the time, and so they've got to use everybody's space to get in. And that, I, I agree with the concept of creating smaller lots and creating affordability for people to be able to access homes, but you still have to resolve the issue of mobility of, of the cars that are there, that are impeding that process.
Um, okay, well, I, I guess all I can tell you is I, I can, we're trying, so, so there are a couple of opposing forces in, in the, in the comments here, and I'm only saying this just to highlight the balancing act that we have to do as we move forward. We want affordability in smaller lots, then that creates that tight space that then, you know, you have to use up with cars and everything else. So, and I'm, and then going back to the, to the fire truck, if, if we, if we build, if, if we try to solve this issue of parking, right, in two different ways, where are we going to put all these cars? We can put them on the street, but then, in order for the, for the emergency vehicles to come, you have to make the street walk. So that's a solution. The other solution is to increase parking requirements for the homeowner. But both those solutions then go, they're the opposing force of affordability, right? So it's, so what are the, sort of, we're trying to figure out what the right option is to make sure that the, that the, the density that is necessary for, really, for you not to have to buy four cars, right? And again, I'm talking, maybe this doesn't happen overnight in Vega Laredo, but if we transition into a more transit-oriented, bus-oriented community, we have to sort of live a little closer together, because the bus can't just stop in a suburban neighborhood to pick up two people. You've got to stop in an area that's a little more dense, pick up more people for the bus system to be viable. So all this kind of work's at its hand, if you want a walkable community with good transit, we have to, to take the first step and allow for that higher density to happen. Now, the way that this, this code right now stands in this draft form, there's a point at which the plots get so small that you need dimensionals and, and design requirements, so that you don't end up with an unintended sort of, um, unattractive and unlivable situation in a smaller lot. Because people can then have dignity with smaller lots. As a matter of fact, you know, and some of the most expensive places on earth are very compact. Sorry?
When people get so close together, it's called a ghetto.
Well, because, because it's designed to the minimal standard, but there are places that we probably all like to go visit and take vacation in, that are very beautiful and compact, and it's probably the most expensive state owner. And, and so what I'm trying to just figure out, there's, I'm trying to divorce the size. And, and so that, what I'm trying to just figure out is there's, I'm trying to divorce the size with the fact that if it is livable, if you can't have a livable three thousand square foot lot situation, it is designed correctly. So we've introduced in the code, and again, we, we took it in the nuts and bolts, but we've introduced in the code as the lots get smaller, then we've attached further design, um, regulations to not have a situation that looks like a slum. So, you know, the parking goes to the back, you know, the, 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 where the building sits on the property, the garages can't sit in the front. So then it doesn't look like a slum, it looks like a big, like, big slum. Uh, and it is, and many communities, you know, actually do that as a preference. Um, so anyway, so those design regulations that are imposed upon the smaller lots are how we've taken a crack at solving for that issue. Um, there's also more room for parking on the street because you don't have all the garages picking up for your pickup on the street when you go to the back. And so that's, that's the approach you, for the smaller lots.
So, so for instance, in the zonings that you have there, uh, you intend to incorporate a design standard with the zone as well, where you're going to limit the size of the house and you're gonna limit the design of the house so that it doesn't have the garages and it doesn't have the other things in order to make it, uh, comply with what is occurring in the real world. Is that what you're saying?
Well, we don't get into architecture in the code, but we do get into building placement where it's access points.
So, so how, if, if, so if you don't get into architecture and you're advocating three thousand square foot home, how are you, how are you in control, what you're suggesting you're gonna control?
Well, because of, because the basics get you ninety percent of the way there in terms of.
The what?
The, 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 the dimensional placement and the, and the regulations that we included in the code gets you much of the way there to have a livable, walkable community in that format of, 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 of lots.
So in a three thousand square foot lot, you're gonna say you can't build more than an eight hundred square foot home? Without a garage, without the?
What we do is we, we, we make them backloaded. Make them backloaded, you know, have regulations about connectivity so people can walk in and out of the, put in a safe way. Um, it's, it, no, we don't limit the size of the, of the house.
So you're gonna have like?
It's the placement and the access.
When, when you're backloading them then?
And protecting the, sorry, protecting the pedestrian environment in front of the house is a big part of this.
Okay, if you're gonna backload a lot, then how are you gonna access it? Are you gonna have alleys in the back or what? Is that the plan?
But even, oh, go ahead.
It, it, it's kinda like, okay, whether I give you the space of a wider street or I give you an alley. You know, you're still, you know, taking different, different dimensional standards to comply with what you wanna do. Uh, to me, it would seem more logical to just say, you know what, let's just make it a sixty foot right of way or a sixty-five foot right of way. Because right now, like, like what Larry's saying, is every subdivision that you get into right now, I think it's thirty-four back to back of baby. You park cars on the side, now you got limited to one lane, one travel lane. And, and, and it's not functional. It's not a functional system. I mean, right now, any subdivision you go to, you can't get through. Somebody's coming and there's parts, you gotta wait, somebody's gotta figure out, you go first and then I'll go. So if we could figure out a way, how to resolve that issue and still comply with smaller lots, instead of backloading them, I mean, it's a good idea, don't get me wrong, I don't disagree with the backloading, that's a good option. It's a good option. But I think the bigger picture here that has to be looked at is the actual amount of, uh, street requirement that may offset some of these things. In other cities, when you have smaller densities like that, what they usually do is, it's a totally different concept. They'll have a main arterial and then they'll have an access road for you to get on it, to get to your subdivision and use that and then come back in. But that's a totally different concept than what you're got here. I mean, that's how they handle it in other, in other states. Um, but I think it's something we need to look at because I think that is a factor that we know what the cost is and I don't believe land is gonna drop anytime soon, if anything, it'll go the opposite way like always. Uh, we need to look at the density factor on smaller lots, the amount of vehicles that is a natural and how we can create an environment there that is a very livable environment for everybody. Keep it in the compliance with what you're talking about, walkability and all these things.
Yo estoy español. Sure? Es más confortable en español. Mira, yo creo que se presta mucha confusión. Está bien la, la recodificación que están haciendo está bien. Pero creo que hay que revisarla más. Coincido con todo lo que han dicho ellos. Coincido que yo no, yo no encontré todavía la diferencia entre RL uno, RL dos, RH uno, RH dos. Aunque lo explicaste y no sé cómo lo expliques en español porque sí lo entendí. No le encontré la diferencia. También por allá tampoco encuentro la diferencia entre el single family residential district, el single family reduced area district. Pero sí estoy preocupado porque nosotros en Laredo estamos acostumbrados a espacios grandes. Hay quien viven casas de una cre. Hay quien viven ranchos, sí? Y hay quienes vivimos en casitas modestas de dieciocho, veinte mil pies. Entonces, yo, yo creo que aquí todavía tenemos esa, esa idea, esa, esa atrición de tener los espacios grandes de Texas. No sé si conoces bien la ciudad. La mayoría de los distritos no tiene banquetas. No tiene banquetas? Sí, no tenemos banquetas. Entonces, yo sí soñaría con una ciudad mejor planeada, con los códigos bien establecidos, sí? Eh, cada vez la ciudad le compro un pedacito más al condado. Sí me gustaría tener bicicletas por todos lados. Creo que ahorita no podemos tener una ciclopista por lo mismo, no hay ni banquetas. Tenemos alguna reunión familiar, no hay donde ponernos. Si mañana la persona que vive en una cre vendiera su casa, ¿cuántos casitas duplex de, de, de tres mil pies crees que caben ahí? ¿Y dónde vas a meter cuarenta, cincuenta autos? Entonces creo que hay que rediseñar el código visualizando un master plan para una ciudad del futuro, moderna, donde podamos tener ciclopistas, donde nos quepa todo esto. No me apresuraría tanto. Se me hacen demasiadas, demasiadas divisiones. Demasiado confuso para poderlo aplicar ahora en este momento. Quizás en California, Nueva York, donde ya no caben, podría funcionar este, 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 esta recodificación. Pero a mí me gustaría, me gustaría volverla a revisar, volver a especificar más, que no se preste a presiones y visualizar una ciudad con una maqueta moderna, presa, o sea, de manguardia. Que pueda corregir los defectos que ya traemos. ¿Te explico?
Y eso es lo que intentas de, de un nivel sistémico. Pero quisiera hacer una pregunta a ti también. Se puede definir qué es lo que quiere decir con la palabra moderna? Que puede, puede ser, eso puede ser muchas cosas, o sea, no, te da poca dirección.
Mira, moderna me refiero a planeada, o sea, ¿te explico? En donde el downtown lo respetes y parezca un downtown. Y los desarrollos nuevos parezcan desarrollos nuevos. No parez, no parezcan vecindarios, ¿verdad? Hablaban de, del mar. Del mar es una ciudad, es una ciudad, es una calle que están tirando las casas para querer construir duplex. Se va a ver parchado. No se va a ver homogéneo, no se va a ver moderno, no se va a ver nuevo. Se van a ver los patches. ¿Te explico? Entonces para mí sería buscar una homogeneidad, sí? No vamos, no vamos a meter tampoco un, un área de trailas, no. También hay áreas para las trailas. Debe de haber áreas para los duplex. No vas a meter, te repito, en gente que, que tiene una cre, no vas a meter puros duplex y los demás siguen viviendo en una cre. No se va a ver bien. ¿Me explico? Sí? Con accesos bien, este, estructurados, entradas, salidas, como dijeron también, que pase libremente. La seguridad en Laredo es muy importante para todos nosotros y todos los compañeros que estamos aquí. Priorizamos que entre una ambulancia, que entre un camión de bomberos. Sí, el sentía aquí es, sí, hasta las patrullas a corretear a algún bandido. Entonces, para nosotros la seguridad es muy importante en todo tipo, en salud, en seguridad personal. Eso es lo que quisiéramos también, ¿no? Un flujo de calles. Si las saturamos y las llenamos con, con casas tan chiquitas o como que ya están pequeñas, pues vamos a tener un problema al rato que vamos a parecer multifamiliares, ¿no? O sea, no, no, ya, ya me siento apretado y todavía ni, ni hemos hecho nada. Pero sí, este, sí me, 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 me atrae la idea de re, re decodificar. El proyecto no es malo, quisiera revisarlo más, especificarlo más, encontrar bien las diferencias. Te repito, por ahí van dos o tres veces que me perdí y me confundo todavía. Y pues gracias, gracias por tu fuerza.
How would you roll it out if you have, uh, the existing city and the way the city, the, um, the, the original city proper was a certain size? Water, Belmar Water District, the Florida, you currently have all that growth. That community was already, uh, already solved, already had its issues. And then in the interim, you took the space in between and created Hillside and those other areas in the middle. When you put in these zones or these new zones that you have put in, you would use that as you begin to incorporate new areas of the city? Or, or are you saying you would take those areas and try to redevelop everything that's already been developed? That's up for discussion. Does that work?
Yeah, so some communities, after they remove a comprehensive plan and they adopt their future land use map, they do a wholesale rezoning to realign with that. So that's one option. Some communities do a transition period where you can still build within the existing districts or you can maybe opt in to the new districts. But the way we structured it is that the existing districts would feed into the new districts. So there's not new areas, it's, that district is comprised of the old districts. But as far as the ETJ annexation, the future land use map is adopted and shows where those areas that are undeveloped in ETJ, what the preferred future lands would be and those future land uses align with our zone.
So I, I would.
So we still have to work out how we, how we adopt.
I would think the more difficult task is to go back, uh, to existing zones and then try to do that. I remember, uh, my good friend Alberto Tangelo who abhorred mobile homes. And so the city did a ten year, ten year transition period. And I would dare say that some mobile homes were eliminated, but not as many as you would have thought. Those mobile homes probably still exist to this day. And, and so my, my question is, how well do you think this is gonna be incorporated or accepted within the community? And is there gonna be the political will to do this?
I wanted to ask the first comment though. There is still a chapter on non-conformities. So everything that's already developed and on the ground now would be able to continue to be, there would be no expiration date of that current use. But when someone went to go back and redevelop that lane, they would reset it to the new renovations. Or if they broke certain, certain thresholds of renovation or expansion that would trigger the new renovations. But if they're, if they're legal today, they would still be legal after the passing of that redevelopment. It's called a non-conformity. One of the second aspects is the political will, which happens.
It wasn't for, right, for all the, the sort of rules that need to rule.
Right, of course. Well, what I would, what I would point you all to is, is what I just said a minute ago, is that there is a place for every, for the, the kind of thing that is happening today, there's a place for it in the new zoning category. There were changes to the, to some of the dimensional standards in a minor way, but there, for the most part, in fact, as you move into the new standards. Part of the reason why there's different categories of new standards is you know, we're sort of matching them up with what the old ones used to be and just getting them to work to be a little more flexible if we can, to not have our, again, it's just sort of another conflict I, I perceive today, might not be, this is how I read it. Um, because I just heard we don't want, we don't want really high, high density houses next to a naked lot. That's sort, that's sort of the reason why this piece, that there are different categories. There are some, uh, lower density ones that are appropriate in some areas and that are beneficial. And then there's also the option to, um, restrict some of that high density in some of the larger lot subdivisions that you could build. So that, that sort of takes care of itself because, and that's why there's categories so that you have the differences in densities and you can, as a, as a planner, designer, engineer, you can play with them in the, the most appropriate way. I think the market takes care of a lot of this too, as you, you know, developers aren't just gonna know their homes, if they're, if they're selling high-end homes, they know what to put next to it or what not to put next to it within the toolkit that's gonna increase or decrease the value of whatever, so. So, and, and if you wanna change it after it's been sold, then it goes to rezoning and it goes, it goes to the same process you go through now, where it's about securing and so on. You know, you can avoid those situations. Um, so, so the, part of the reason why these categories are there are to make sure that there's compatibility between different densities. Um, and then to answer your question about, you know, is there, well, I, I think that this is, um, a, a, a change that doesn't sort of change, shake the world underneath, uh, the development community, at least that's the intent. But at the same time nudges us to move forward in moving, you know, the comp plan into implementation. That's, that's the approach we're taking, you know, so not, you know, tectonic shifts here, but moving forward to.
So what was the, uh, the outcome of, uh, some of the comments that the development community had about, about these proposals?
Um, I've got one here, you know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna. I don't wanna misuse your, your words. Um, and again, when you took notes, you can read them all. I, I hate to misrepresent what, what I heard because I need to go through them. Uh, but again, I'm, you know, ex, you know, extracting the, sort of the sentiment from the development community from this afternoon, again, without getting into the nuts and bolts is the, 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 there is a, a need to have the smaller lots still, to be able to have that as a product. That was an absolute. Um, so we know that that, that there's, you know, a, a, a need, a need uh, from the development community to keep that, uh, as, as an option. I think a lot of the discussion involved around that as well.
And I think the issue there is, uh, I, I wanna say, uh, almost everybody's a proponent of affordability, or at least I am. And what I would hate to see is to have us move forward in a direction where we create smaller sized lots with the intent of, uh, reducing the cost of the finished product and, and then not have that finished product priced at what we thought it would be. Because people take advantage of it, so. You have the only, the only product on the market and you're gonna be able to sell it for whatever you want. Because you don't, you don't have enough of that product.
Good question. Nos, vas a dar copia de esto, o el material?
Sí, el, el, el libro completo.
Está muy cargado.
Es esto, es, ahorita, ahora está disponible en el, en el website, el Anning and Domy.
Ah, okay.
Los voy a bajar, pero también está disponible si lo quieren, si lo quieren impreso.
No los mandaron Rafael hace tiempo.
No lo.
No los mandaron hace tiempo.
A comentario, just, just a quick comment.
Yo creo que está muy saturado.
I think, I, I agree with Chuy that we, just a quick comment. I agree with Chuy that, and the other developers, that we need small lots. But I think we should look at the option of the front width of the, of the lot. If, if we can, can, can actually create a lot that has the width that is appropriate to handle at least two vehicles and the driveway, two vehicles parked on the street and the entrance to a driveway.
Twenty forty, ten, okay. We're talking fifty foot wide lot.
As soon as, that's, that's what. And, uh, right now we have about, uh, forty. Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, five, that's an R one B.
So, so if we, we, if we can kinda compromise on, on the width of the lot, we don't have to deal with the, uh, with the eastmans on the back, which is a great idea, it's just the land is so expensive. So what are you gonna do? You're gonna have an eastman, that's land that is not buildable, see? So, that's, that's what I think. That was only a comment.
I just have another quick comment before we move away from zoning districts. I know there was, uh, some comments on properties being annexed to the, to the city and being, uh, zoned agricultural and how it can conflict with surround. and how it can conflict with surrounding properties. Some cities, um, have adopted a zoning district called, I think it's Development Reserve. So basically newly annexed, um, annexed properties can ask to have this develop, development reserve. And it basically only allows for, it's like a temporary zoning designation. And, yeah, it's a holding for whenever they have a plan and want to come and rezonate. And I think it only allows for like residential, uh, uses at the time. So it kind of like gives you the protection of a zoning, but it also gives you the flexibility to review it later on, once they have a zoning that they-
Without having to come in and put in livestock there.
Right.
So we pulled out some additional examples from the code as well. Took one residential district, took one business district, just to show you how some of the dimensional standards have changed. This is actually on the left showing E one, R one district. We know that the city has recently updated in advance of this E C update. So the setbacks on the right are actually what's in place currently. So you have, you have a ten-foot front setback, a six-foot rear, ten-foot side on the corner and five-foot on the interior. But what is changing is the minimum lot area is going from six thousand to five thousand. And although in the current L V C, you've got the zero block line houses and townhouses as a permitted use, like I said before, there's no mechanism to get around the setbacks. And so we're adjusting the regulations for those to make those permitted use by right. Um, and then accessory dwelling units are not currently allowed. We're allowing those as well as duplexes in this district. The addition also of a conservation option, sort of based in additional flexibility. So in some of these residential districts, if you preserve in a subdivision, a certain percentage of open space, you get a density incentive, so you can get a density bonus based on the percentage of open space that you preserve. It's kind of like a cluster development. And it's, it's optional, uh, but it just makes in additional flexibility with it. And then a business district, this is current E one, which will be the, the M X two. Currently has a twenty-five foot front setback, uh, ten foot on the sides. So this will be going to a zero foot front setback, so they can go all the way up to the sidewalk. And then a twenty foot maximum building setback. So that's to encourage the buildings to come up to the sidewalk, address the street, create a pedestrian realm, and then force the parking to be behind the building. And this is just going to be in your higher intensity mixed-use business districts, uh, that you would see this. Sort of town centers, regional centers. And then the minimum lot area is going from forty-six hundred to no minimum lot area in this district. So those are just some examples. I encourage you once again to download the, the Article Two zoning districts and look through all of the different dimensional standards. Once again, very much still a draft, so if you have any comments.
I have a question on you. Why would you not have a minimum lot area on that proposed M X two?
Just to allow them the maximum flexibility.
Well, I mean, because then you're going to have issues that we deal with here on the commission constantly. If people want to convert a property that is probably, uh, could be, let's say, for example, a, a small lot from the old days, a three thousand square foot lot with a thirty-five foot front. Now they want to convert it, and now we're allowing them to convert it to an M X two?
Well, we would, uh, without the, without the process.
I understand, but possibly could go through. I don't believe we should have that. I believe we should have, if we're going to go into this, you know, we need to have a minimum lot size for a commercial district or a business district.
So there's still a future land use map, there's still going to be a zoning map that shows where the state districts should be, where they make sense.
I agree, I agree. But like you just said, zoning is arbitrary. Zoning can come up for discussion at any commission and can be changed. If there is no lot minimum, then that's going to create a problem, in my opinion, for any small lot can be coming and say, oh, I want to be a business district now, so change my lot size. Where if you control it, because when you run in a business, you've got issues there that you've got traffic coming and going. And I don't think you're taking that into account over here, we're not putting a minimum lot size on that. And I think that we need to do that. I, I just, I just have horror having to look at small properties coming back to this commission for rezoning. And let's say that we deny it, but let's say the council approves it. Well, now we got this hodgepodge of little areas that really should not be a business district. But if you put a minimum size on it, then that deters anything from kind of being overwritten, because now you've got a minimum lot size on the district like we had before.
So we need to leave room for some, in some cases, by right, the, the mix of uses that is necessary for somebody to have a corner store somewhere in some appropriate neighborhood. Like that, that would need to be an option if we're, if we're trying to get people to have useful places to walk to. Because you can put all the sidewalks in the world, if you don't have a useful place to walk to, then you're always going to use your car, which means you're always going to have four cars. So we have to pepper in some of these appropriately intense useful neighborhood uses, sort of infiltrating into some of the newer neighborhood design. So, I mean, I'm not saying, all I'm saying is there's, that's the reason why this is the way it is. If there's a sort of right sizing it so that you don't have these unintended consequences, then we can figure out-
Well, I think we do need to give it some kind of a minimum lot size. I, I, I think, I don't disagree with the concept, you know, of neighborhood uses. I, I fully agree with that. But I think to leave it open-ended to me is, is not the right way to go. I think we do need to give it some kind of a parameter. Because most people are going to be looking at, at the district and they're going to say, if you have a standard that they got to meet a minimum, then I think, you know, that, that's a lot easier for everybody to digest in their business mind. And I'll tell you where I'm coming from. There's too many people that are mom and pop type stuff. And I've seen it, because when I was in building, I saw this all the time. I'd have people come in and say, I'm going to go ahead and, uh, rent this property, because what I'm going to do is I'm going to sell snacks. Well, how much is your rent? Well, it's fifteen hundred a month. Well, how much is your overhead? Well, I haven't figured that out. Well, how much are you going to mark up your bag of Fritos to be able to pay for this? Because I haven't really thought it out. There's a lot of people who don't really have a good idea as to what the hell they want to do. So if we put a parameter on it, that limits it a little bit. And I saw these businesses bust every three months. People just do not have a mom and pop stuff, a good handle as to what they want to do in business. And that's why I'm saying we need a minimum, some kind of a standard on it. To, to minimize, I'd see people come in, I had three thousand dollars, four thousand dollars, they just blew their money.
So, and I don't know, I, I need to go back a little, but I think we have a buffer requirement between this and other districts. So we, we can bring some of that forward and see if that's, if that is satisfying.
All right.
The other thing I would just add, if we definitely look at, you know, adding a minimum lot size. The other thing I would add is that we have beefed up the language as far as the approval criteria for rezoning. So in the procedures article, it talks about what the board and the council should consider when they're authorizing rezoning. So it needs to be in compliance with the comprehensive plan. And then there's, you know, several other criteria that would just make sure that it's the right, the right change. So that should deter or at least prevent some of these sort of-
Well, I agree, but then again, the ultimate say-so is the city council. The city council can decide what they want to do, irregardless of the, of the recommendation from the P and Z commission. And that gets into politics. And that's why I'm just trying to say, if we can minimize the political will to get something done that really shouldn't be done by doing something, something to look at, okay?
I'm going to make a comment real quick, Erasmus, on that, uh, minimum lot area. Maybe what I, what I feel that, uh, that Marius is trying to, to create is that if we have a building, like downtown Laredo, and, uh, we have a thousand square feet right next to that building, that could be usable for, for what you were mentioning, maybe sell spray or, or sell, uh, some type of product that is good for the community. They will qualify under the no, the no limitations. Versus that if we put three thousand or four thousand square feet, then that particular area of a thousand feet within a, a business area will not be usable at all. I agree with you with, uh, with a lot of limitations, but I would like to have a clarification as to how you got to that. If that's the case, then there might be something there, but we need to know.
That was the intent.
That was the intent.
Is there, is there really to have the-
The choice.
The, the mix of uses where appropriate, but then again, I, I'm trying to go back, I can't remember off the top of my head, there's a, be a buffer. So you have to be X amount of feet from this other type of zoning. Or you have to provide a ten-foot buffer, you know, something like that to protect what's, what's surrounding you. But I, I get your point and I, you know, I think we need to go in and give you some options to make sure that's not an issue.
Okay.
Okay, awesome. And then I just wanted to point out some other areas where there are some, uh, changes. We're still looking at this very actively, uh, where we can do trade-offs and alternative compliance paths. But these are just some of the areas where there's already built-in flexibility. We've got more flexible permitted uses. There's a new shared parking formula, which opposed to the, the existing code, which says you can't have overlapping hours, you now can have a shared parking agreement where there's a percentage formula based on the time of day and the use. You can reduce some of that surface parking requirement. Limited exemptions for, in order to promote dam-free use and renovating and visiting buildings, you can get some exemptions from regulations to do that. Alternative compliance with landscaping, your park credits are transferable. And then we already talked about the conservation options for residential districts. And then you can use tree preservation to reduce your required landscape.
Before you go on, let me ask you a question on park credits transfer. What, what is it that you're talking about there? On a subdivision that is being developed, that park credit transfer, what, where would?
If you have a parkland dedication requirement-
Right.
There's a formula, if you dedicate land and assess of that, um, you would get a credit. And I think your limitations on the area can be used, you have to, you know, use it within a certain area of that subdivision. But I don't go off the top of my head, I'll have to-
It would be land or money or?
So there is an in lieu when you're doing the initial dedication, but I don't think the, the in lieu would buy credits. So the, the credits is just if you-
In other words, if you, I guess, want to donate more land for park use than you're really required to, then you could say, well, I've got an extra two acres here that I want to, okay, because it's a creek. And I want to use that as a green space, but because we're going to do another development down the road, I'll just transfer some of that over there.
Right. It's going to be within a certain area, you can't say across town, I'm doing another park credit.
Okay, so what's the radius that you're looking at?
I'd have to look into it, I don't know.
Because I mean, I, I, those are things that we really need to look at hard and heavy. I, I'm not, I'm not sold on that transfer credit at all. I, I just, no. I'd really like to have a really in-depth in-ho. On how that, that is going to come about, because, uh, you know, anybody who's familiar with development knows exactly what you're going to get when you're going to have that over, that credit transfer. And it's, it's not usable space for parks.
Yeah, and, and we have to beef up the language of the parkland dedication to make sure the parks director has the authority to approve. We have additional sort of, you know, the, the land has to be usable so that we're not getting the leftover scraps or the-
Yeah, yeah.
So we, we have beefed up that parkland dedication section.
I in fact did that many years ago. And, and I got a lot of creeks, but, uh, some of the major regional parts that you have today.
Not very usable. Way more parks.
Having a little park on Andrews is a half block long where you have to spend your whole day with a whole crew that's here with it.
The, the idea of the green space has always been that the area that's being developed actually benefits from the green.
Didn't we buy a property from you when I was there and it now is Central Park, the Central Park?
Yes, beautiful space. But the idea has been that when they do a development, that the community in that development benefits from, uh, from the green area. You're right. They, uh, they will provide a, uh, a, uh, an area that is not even walkable as a green space. And that doesn't make any sense, because then the community, we go back to the, to the small lots, see? They want to go out and barbecue or, or just have the kids walk on the green areas. They're not accessible, so it's, uh, it's a waste of space. You're right on that, that's a good call, Erasmus.
It's got to be a mile and a half.
Huh?
It's got, it's, it can only be three quarters of a mile.
Three quarters of a mile?
Well, the, the radius, sorry, you're right, you're right.
It's a three quarter mile radius from, from. I think you need to revisit that.
It's a mile and a half, it's a mile and a half radius.
A mile and a half?
A mile and a half radius from the, from where it should have been to get the credit.
I think we need to look at that again. I, I, I don't agree with that.
You want to make it smaller?
I don't even know if we should ever credit the transfer, to be honest with you, because each development should be able to stand on its own. As opposed to saying, hey, I'm developing this, but I'm also going to develop over here and I'm just, I, I, I think everybody should be able to plan accordingly, based on, on the land that you have and, and the, the way the land is situated.
Sorry, we're talking about the excess.
The what? I understand, I understand.
If I give you more now.
I understand that, but I'm saying, you know, we really shouldn't be looking at that.
And there is language in there that gives the, the parks director authority to sort of accept and, and approve of any of those dedications. And so they have to look at the, the whole city and where we're providing the different categories of parks and the service areas of those. And so in certain areas you might have too much park, in certain areas you might not have enough. And so I think all that's baked in there to where the parks director has authority to approve some of those dedications.
I think we need to really look at this. I, I think it really has to be really looked at, because I can see rooms here, uh, there's, there's room here for misuse of that particular credit. And I have a concern with that.
So you're, you're pushing down to the administrative level of the individual department?
Yeah.
The ability to approve or disapprove that?
Maybe it should be the parks board instead of the, the director.
Well, that's why you have the planning and zoning board.
Those were issues that we saw some time back in the commission. And I know when Joey Diaz was on here, Joey was very adamant about parks and the, and what was being really given to that subdivision, whether it was usable or not. And I, I just think we need to look at that. I, I, I don't really agree with, with excess land being transferable to do somewhere else. I, I don't think that's the right thing. Okay.
Maybe have another discussion later.
Yeah, I think so.
Can I, can I ask you a question? Are you, would you be more comfortable if the radius was smaller?
I think so. I think if we kind of like, you know, got it down to like, maybe at the most, half a mile, at the most, then maybe I could say, yeah, okay. But it's a mile and a half, it's, it's sizable.
So are you going to establish a minimum of park requirement, uh, within that half mile zone?
There already is a sort of household in an area for a big apartment.
Yeah. Does that-
Right, so, so yeah, we're, we're still working through that section. There, as you may know, there was a recently open space master plan adopted by the city. So we're trying to incorporate that into the code. So we have to bring the existing parkland dedication sort of into alignment with that. And there's some new formulas based on, you know, acreage per dwelling units. And so all of that isn't quite a hundred percent updated yet, but we're working on it. But there will be formulas based on the number of dwelling units, or number of dwelling units, that will determine how much park credit you have to deliver to the city. And that's coming from the new master plan.
The, the, the concern I have, going away from what Erasmus was saying, is that if, if you reduce the area, then you're, you're going to end up with a bunch of little parks. And they're going to be impossible to maintain. And that's, that's my concern. And when I was city manager, the reason we developed Magnovo, the reason we developed Central Park, the reason we developed, uh, Liberty or whatever it's called now, in Elven, was because of the issues that we were having with the recreation department, parks and recreation department, not being able to maintain the facilities that they currently have. I, I think that there's parkland today. In fact, I know one very-
In fact, I know one very ritzy neighborhood that has park space fenced in by property owners. I won't mention where, but I'm well aware of it. And I think that...
Is it a public park or is it the...
Well, it was dedicated as a park. And, and if a park is dedicated, you can't turn around and sell it under state law. You've got to have an election and the voters have to decide whether they want to get away from the dedicated use of that property. And so, so you have certain mechanisms that lock in and you're going to have little pieces of land all over the city that nobody knows that they're parks that are probably going to be sitting in people's yards. I mean, you have that today.
That's true.
Por mi casa hay uno.
So then just to call some of the technicals, some of the different areas, then, or... Here's the, the areas where it's... Where, where apartments on certain activities. Where apartments on... We want to encourage them to be covered in the green, to cover the catch around. There is additional requirements for extended space which goes forth for parkland dedication. So that would mostly be... Um, we're, we're trying to improve the improvement guarantee, the performance guarantee section, which has currently just been sort of renewed over and over again. We're going to make it so that there's one, one-time renewal. And then there's some incremental changes, which we've already sort of discussed, most of them moving towards smaller blocks and lots. Um, we're improving the addressing standards. We just talked about the parkland or any state requirements. And then overall, we're just cleaning up the procedures and organization. And then we have removed a few of the specially used permits, uh, just made them by right by adding specially used regulations. So as long as they comply with those specially used regulations.
Let me shoot back a little bit. Let me ask you a question. Improved guarantees. You're talking about letters of credit on subdivisions?
Correct.
You're giving them one year only? Is that what you said?
We're currently looking at it, we're looking at City of San Antonio as a best practice or a reference, but right now it's currently just being renewed over and over again.
Yes.
They're aware of some thirty-year-old letters of credit. And so we want to, we want to make sure that those have an enforcement date. Um, and that, you know, they can, they can improve that.
No, I, I, I think that's a good thing. I don't know if twelve months is the right number, but...
I think the first, the first timeline is like three years.
Okay.
And so then after that it'd be a one-year extension.
Okay, all right. Then that, that makes perfect sense.
But yeah, we're still working with the council.
All right, that makes sense. I remember having letters of credit that were there ten years. And finally, uh, the developer would turn around and say, you know what? Go ahead and do the letter of credit because they wouldn't even pay for the first quarter of the block.
Yeah.
That's a good standard.
I think we also added in there that every year it'll, you know, add inflation here and adjusted so that you don't run into that situation.
Yep.
All right. And then, uh, like Orlando mentioned, we met with the LDA today. The goal is to come back on the eighteenth and do a more detailed workshop with them and go through each of the articles in a holiday workshop. We'd like to sort of extend a, I guess, a similar process where you now have access or will get access shortly to the document and can go through and, and provide more detailed comments and responses. And then we probably need to come back and meet with you again and, uh, receive that feedback. And then if we need to go into more detail on any of the individual people, we can do that. Um, and then we are looking to go out to different, some of the different bodies within the city. Kiwanis, uh...
Notary.
Brooke Notary, uh, you know, other groups. And so those will be coming, uh, shortly, in the next month or two. Uh, we have a higher knowledge of dates of those. And then, you know, we, we have also sort of put a definite schedule on how we're moving towards adoption. You know, based on this late August sort of end of the feedback. Um, you know, it's possible you're still getting adoption by the end of this year, but we don't have a definite date. So that's sort of next step. Other than that, I mean, that's sort of an introduction to the code for now. And then once you guys have an opportunity to go and read it and get it to a better content. Yes, so right now on the website was the first draft. It's been up there for a couple of months. We do have a working draft that we're calling Draft Two. It doesn't incorporate all of the comments we've received yet, but it's the most of the data. That should be going live on the website tomorrow. And so both drafts will be up there for the people that have already downloaded Draft One, uh, just so that they can see the differences. And then moving forward, we're going to try and track all the changes in red so that people can see what's changed between the drafts.
I, I would personally like the, uh, a hard copy of Draft, the second draft, which is going to be updated. And also your contact information, Mario, so we can, I, I can send you comments. Not that you're going to incorporate it just because I send them, but just ideas as to what I see there.
Well, I'm a little, and we're taking, you know, Nelson, yeah, we're, we're...
We're going to be very systematic. We're, we're going to be very systematic about taking a comment so that you can identify your comment and then the response to that comment, or the recommendation to, to take a different direction or some other sort of resolution to that. And so we, like, now we begin this sort of the redlining and being very meticulous about it. So make sure that everyone knows where their comment went and not going somewhere they get forgotten.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if, if anybody on the commission ever wants to email and they don't have the email, they can send it to us and we'll forward it to them. Uh, we can do that easily enough, so.
Okay, very good. All right. Well, thank you very much for your presentation. All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion to second.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.